...special meeting, we have several new trustees to swear in. I'd like to make note that Mr. Graber is not present at this meeting. So, start off, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I will call for a motion to accept today's agenda.
So moved.
Second. More seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion to accept agenda passes six to zero. Okay, now we get to swear in our new officers. Okay, so, Mr. Hannah is a returning trustee, but he will take the oath of office. He would read the oath.
Yes, I, Michael Hannah, do solemnly swear that I I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and you would please sign there. Very good, welcome back. Okay, Ms. Beth Proper, you've reelected. You would read the oath of office.
I, Beth Proper, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of trustee of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Congratulations, and welcome aboard. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you. I almost forgot that I had to be sworn in today as well.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the nomination of the president of the Board of Education for the eighteen-nineteenth school year.
And I wanted to do just something a little atypical, which is spend thirty seconds to talk about the role of the president, which is that, obviously, the president conducts board meetings, but I think most importantly, the board president serves the board in making sure that each trustee is a part of the process, that each trustee understands where we are at any given time in terms of our actions and planning, that each trustee feels heard and a part of the process. The president works with the vice president and the superintendent in planning, that as a leadership team with the vice president and the superintendent supports the board in setting goals and in achieving them, is the voice of the board to the community and the media, that it represents the board in our relationship with the superintendent. And with that comes a lot of time, so, I just, sometimes we jump right into the nomination process, and I thought it might be important just to share some of those duties, so, thanks.
Well, I'll just, I'll jump in and say thank you, and thank you for stepping up, because it is not an easy role to assume for those of you who are not on the board, it is not a job that anybody takes lightly, it is incredibly time-consuming, and thank you very much for doing it, and to you too, Maria.
So, may I have a nomination for president for the eighteen-nineteenth school year?
I nominate Michael Hannah. We need a second?
Second.
Second.
And, any other nominations? Have to do that as a matter of fact. May I have a vote on Mr. Michael Hannah being elected as president to the Board of Education for the eighteen-nineteenth school year? All in favor?
Aye.
George, please thank him.
Thank you.
Mr. Hannah?
Appreciate it.
And now I will swear you in as president, and then turn the meeting over to you. Once again.
I, Michael Hannah, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of president of the Irvington School Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, so you will sign that.
Won't look like the other one, but yeah. Maybe it does.
And then I'm going to leave the book with you as you swear in the president, vice president, and then the district clerk.
Exactly, so.
And I want to give you back your.
Thank you. So, our next step is to nominate a vice president for the Board of Education. Could I get a nomination for the vice president?
I nominate Maria Kashkin.
Great, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so, it's close, we'll go with Maura Geddard was the second, Brian Friedman was the first nomination, and are there any other nominations for vice president? Very good, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, next, oh, yes, I gotta walk over to you, right here, and have you say right here.
I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of vice president of the Irvington School Board of Education according to the best of my ability. And I'm elected, too, so.
That's great.
I'm sorry, did you nominate anyone?
It was Brian, and then Maura was the second, and congratulations.
Thanks very much.
Okay, so with that comes the, then we note the line of authority within the board, so it starts with myself, then Maria, and then at this point, I think it's actually Dave Graber, who's not present today, Deb Hargraves, Brian Friedman, Maura Geddard, and Beth Proper. Good. For the next, the committee and liaison appointments, we will circle back, so we're gonna table this for now, and we'll work together to figure out those assignments, and at our next board meeting, hopefully, we'll be ready to approve it at that time. Next is a very poignant moment for us, we will be appointing a new district clerk, but I just wanna say, Elaine, thank you so much, we spent a lot of time celebrating you last year as secretary, but you stayed on and helped us through this transition period, and it's very much appreciated, and I hope to continue to see you on Main Street. And just like us, you have an interest in the ongoing success of the schools as a grandmother, and so we'll do our best to make sure that we keep doing a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you, Elaine.
At the same time, I would like to welcome and introduce Margaret Peggy Robinson. Peggy is new to the school district now, will be assuming an expanded clerk role, so not only will we become comfortable seeing Peggy at our board meetings, helping facilitate the meetings, taking her minutes and creating her agendas for us, but she'll be working twenty-five hours a week in the district office, so we, five half-days essentially is how we are referring to it, but with looking at, and she'll be here the morning hours, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and afternoons, Tuesday, and Thursdays as well, she's going to be leading registration for us, and will serve as our foil officer for public records. So, welcome.
Thank you for taking on those responsibilities.
Thank you.
So, now we will formally appoint the district clerk. Is there, I guess there's a nomination for that, right? Yes, so can I get a nomination to appoint Peggy Robinson as the district clerk?
So moved.
Great, can I get a second?
Second.
And I guess formally it's Margaret, so, yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, congratulations. So, is there a signing here?
Yes.
Can I turn the page?
I, Margaret Robinson, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of district clerk of the Irvington Board of Education according to the best of my ability.
Here you got three lefties in a row. You get to keep the books up. Thank you. And so we will move on to, congratulations, we'll move on to the appointment of our district officers, which are noted in the agenda. Could I get a motion to approve six point two?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
So Brian, Brian was the first, and Maura was the second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, we have a special opportunity here, we have a consent agenda, in which, as this is the reorganization meeting, there are numerous things we'll be approving swiftly, but one of them that we'd like to pull out at this time is number fourteen point two for a reading specialist, which we made a correction in our agenda because it had been noticed as a literacy specialist, no, it's fourteen point three, actually, sorry, fourteen point three, so that is correct, as a reading teacher. So, we're gonna pull that out, that's for the appointment of Jennifer Gallagher as a reading teacher, and could I get a motion to accept the appointment of Jennifer as our reading teacher?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Maria is the first, and Brian is the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Jennifer, I'd like to take a second to formally welcome you and your folks to the Irvington community, and for the board, as the, certainly aware from communications last week, we're very fortunate to be able to invite you to join the school district. Jennifer will be serving as a reading teacher, that'll be working between their elementary and middle school, serving our students, she brings with her a wealth of knowledge and experience, and we know that you're gonna make a great impact on our students, both personally and academically, so, we look forward to you starting off in September with our kids and seeing great things from you, so, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, thank you.
And I just add a piece to that, which is, one of the things that we're really actually quite excited about, and we think is gonna be a huge asset, aside from just who you are and your skill set, is this link between Main Street and middle school, so, as those of you know who've gone through where your children go from Main Street, there's so many connections, but the transitions are transitions, and when we have overlap of people, we see it from Dow's to Main Street with like Rebecca Semplio and some others, it is very helpful, it is just a perspective that is very hard to get any other way than to have somebody who's doing the work in both places, so, so we're excited on a lot of different levels, but that's gonna be, I think, a huge asset for all of us.
Great, wonderful.
Yeah.
Excellent, yes, welcome. All right, well now, as we were discussing beforehand, it's a lot of work by our district staff to put together the reorganization agenda, because there are many, many items, and so, we'll have a chance, if there are still some outstanding questions, to ask them before we approve it, but could I get a motion to accept our consent agenda? In doing so, I wanna point out that we have made some shifts in our, in item nine point six, the public meeting schedule, it was pointed out to us that the September eighteenth meeting was, is on a date that is a holiday, religious observance, and so we want to make an adjustment, and so the proposed changes would be that it would instead be a week later on the twenty-fifth, and that we would also shift the meetings in October to October ninth and October twenty-third. And there's been some questions raised about one or two other dates that we can circle back and look at going forward, but right away, we wanted to make those adjustments, so, so that's noted, and also, as I was saying before, fourteen point two was noted originally as a literacy specialist, but as a reading specialist. Are there any other adjustments that we've made? Okay, so can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, and are there any?
Beth.
Congratulations on your first motion.
Thank you.
Can I get a, are there any questions related to items on the consent agenda?
So, Michael, so in other words, you want, if we just go through them page by page, if there's a question, just ask?
Yeah.
Okay, so the only, one of the questions I had that I had raised earlier is just a better understanding, so, under eight other annual appointments, just to be clear, so we have an outside law firm who advises the district, and that's Ingram and Smith, and so we are approving that contract tonight, and that retainer amount, which is thirty-nine seven nine five, and then in addition, we have another retainer that just goes to labor at thirty-four thousand, and then after that amount, they bill us hourly at two forty, that's correct? And then the only other law firm we have is Hawkins Stella Field, and that's bond counsel.
Right, that's only intermittent when we would actually have a bond.
Okay.
But we use them at all last year, we didn't have any particular need for that last year, but we do appoint them so that it's there when we need it, and we potentially would use it this year.
That's exactly what I was asking, and then that, is that, are we approving that contract as well, Hawkins?
It's, I don't actually have a con, well, we have a, we have an hourly rate with him, we don't have really a contract, so, I mean, what I'm sure.
For the bond, we're gonna be billed hourly for any advice they give us?
Right, right, it's not a retainer, no.
Is there a reason why we don't have a retainer?
Actually, let me just see, when we get to that point, I will put it back on the board agenda, when we get ready to do that, I'll make sure I have something for you, because there is a, there is a rate he sent me, I don't, probably don't have it here, unfortunately.
Yeah, 'cause it just struck me that when I was looking at that, I thought of it after the fact that, considering we are looking at a bond, that maybe we should have a contract that's.
Yeah, it's usually a flat fee, but I will double-check that.
And in terms of Ingram and Smith, I assume we, for any amounts, they bill us over their retainer, there's obviously a bill that comes in, and a detailed invoice with the additional hours?
Yes, and even with the retainer, every item I call, they have is on there, so we do get all the detail, we get him money's worth on the retainer. Okay. Yeah, on that section, I don't have anybody else. And then, let's see.
Can I ask about fourteen point fourteen, the sixth period? There's quite a number of specialized teachers, I'm assuming it's coverage for, for an extra period, but I'm not understanding some of these other ones, like Andrew Lund, Amy Panitz, is that the same thing, she's covering an extra period?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Eleska as well, because she's, she's gonna be providing a support period into the middle school classroom, that's through our, actually through one of our grants, but it still obviously needs to be approved, you know, as a way to support the new middle school class and some of the shifts and changes, and maybe to, maybe we wanna make sure that this coming year is off to a really, really good, strong start, and that Larry, our new teacher, has the support, but just in general, that's been, as we know, this was a challenging year, and she has an incredible level of expertise, so it seemed that that was a viable model to ensure that both of our programs are functioning well, and really is an opportunity for us to be bringing in more students who would benefit from having the kind of program that Irvington offers. And you said that this is covered by a grant?
So, we receive federal grants under IDEA, and that we would be using monies available from that to cover this expenditure.
Okay, and then the only other one that doesn't make sense in terms of support is Andrew Lund?
Your leadership?
Thank you. Okay, thank you for that.
The other question I had was on fourteen point seventeen, fall coaching positions, I know that there's a lot of work that goes into this, and there's, I know that, so I recognize a lot of the names of returning coaches, are all of the coaches listed on fourteen point seventeen district employees?
Yeah, by way of resolution, we're appoint, you will be appointing them, authorizing their employment at the reference salary, so all of these individuals will be considered district employees.
Okay. All right, and then in terms of being district employees, what does that involve in terms of just round checks, fingerprinting? What do we do as a district?
Yeah, so everyone is fingerprinted, and so it's a process that all employees go through when they're hired now, and in doing so, once they're fingerprinted, if there's, we would know if someone was disqualified, if there was a disqualifying criminal offense in their background, or if someone is arrested down the road, that we receive notification from the state of New York. And I would say, I just don't wanna single out our coaches, that holds true for all of our teachers, our administrators, our custodians, anyone that's a district employee.
Well, I'm excited, everybody, looks like most people came back, so that's fantastic.
And I do wanna note, we do have a few other positions that we'll be adding in August, Mr. McCormick is finalizing those details.
And the only other question I had on the agenda that I had raised earlier is with regard to Edutech, and I know that they're providing a lot of services, but tonight, we're actually approving the contract, is that correct, that we've entered into with Edutech? And, correct?
Yes.
The, the original contract was in the June agenda, so the main contract was on the June agenda. Their data service, their technology services, their, you know, technology specialists, those were all on the June agenda, this is a separate contract.
And the reason I'm asking is, so, in the June agenda, was, there's monies attached to that contract, and this is, this is the contract for the data manager position, right? 'Cause I read the one that was attached tonight, so the one we, so the two of them together, if we add those monies up, that's the entire extent of what we're paying Edutech this year?
On a contractual basis, yes.
On a contractual basis, and then in addition, up and above the contractual basis, how does it work?
Well, only if we use them for installation, like, we would bid out anything, so if they end up becoming a vendor, like, if they're gonna, we're gonna do a project, and we bid something out, and they, they bid that out at their rate, and then we say, okay, that's for this rate, and then we would use them. That happened, like, during the smart schools when we were doing the wireless project, but that would, that would be a separate project that would be quoted each time.
By bid out, you mean an RFP?
Well, it's actually just a quote at this point, usually the dollar amount would not require formal bidding, so.
Oh, okay.
If we had to do that, I would go for a formal bid, but no.
Oh, okay, got it.
And that's really under the purchasing agent title that I, that you.
Okay. So moved. I think that's all I had, 'cause everything else was answered early, so I understood.
In the meantime, I'll also just thank the PTSA for their, I'm sure there'll be more, but we have some grants here for Global Read Allowed Author, Trout in the Classroom at the Middle School, the Global Read Allowed was at the Main Street School, and Giving Trees, which are district-wide, so thank you to the PTSA, and I don't have the list in here, you can pull it up, I E F grants.
Yeah, the playground.
Is that, is that the playground? So, we just, a number of us were able to attend the grand opening of the new Main Street School playground, which was fantastic, but, I mean, this list here also lists the whole, this is for, this is looking backwards at the past year, so the.
This is eighteen nineteen.
Oh, this is eighteen nineteen, so this is what approved, so we have over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in grants, include meditation, Shakespeare residency, play at the middle school, clear water visit, flexible learning center, storytelling at Dow's Lane, literature, mad month of science, third grade family math night, first grade reading night, maker thinking, how did geography shape our city at Dow's Lane, hands-on science enrichment, Tara Not So Furma at Dow's Lane, replacement of adventure education equipment at the middle school, high school, the, what is the MSM partnership? Do you know what that is?
Brass masterclass workshop? It wasn't there.
Yeah.
Oh, two different ones?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
But anyhow, it's a lot, it's a lot of, a lot of support that the Irvington Education Foundation is providing to our schools and our students, so, thank you for all their hard work, and I believe, does that cover our?
Consent agenda?
Yeah, so, can I get a, all in favor for our consent agenda?
Aye.
Very good, so that was unanimous, and now, we move into our discussions, and because we have some limited time, we were going to, let me see where we are here, we're gonna start with the superintendent and the board discussing the twenty eighteen-nineteenth focus, I'll turn it over to you.
So, good morning, as we started last year, we kinda closed last year with a bit of a recap of some of the work that we had done during the course of the year, but since we've gone through that process pretty thoroughly, we wanted to kinda tip our cap in looking at direction for the upcoming school year, as well as some of the things that we achieved last year, and in doing so, to think, when we think about this past year, you know, we revised our approach to our presentations and meeting discussions, being very deliberate where possible, and dedicating one meeting a month to a work session where we had presentations, a variety of discussions, and some shared learning, and then we kept one meeting relatively exclusive to business items. In doing so, we had some real positive conversations and learning, as I referenced before, linked towards district goals, building level initiatives, we had a roundtable discussion with our administration related to instructional rigor, where we developed a shared definition that we will be using moving forward. Dr. Core provided a great presentation on assessment at Ames Webb, and the strategic plan was another presentation, as well as other topics throughout the course of this school year. Also, during the year, you know, when we think of a part of process, but it's also presentation and discussion, is budget, and based upon the feedback that we have received, and some collaboration with board leadership, Ms. Stein and I revised our budget process, not only was it somewhat streamlined, and when I say streamlined, it was the presentation front of it, we still provided all the customary backup documentations with actuals, the actual expenditures, and other supporting financial documents, but streamlined the presentation and discussion to allow for more time and focus around the particular issues and questions that were on the table, and we made great effort to ensure that our work related to budget was connected and aligned with our strategic plan. So in doing so, we think about our strategic plan, we have our, the strategic objectives, which are six principles by which we are really underpinning all of our work in the district, so that's work related to goals, that's work related to facilities, initiatives, and of course, as I referenced, budgetary work, so you'll continue to see the strategic objectives being integrated into everything that we do in our school district. So when we think about things coming up in the, in the coming year, we will continually look to engage our work, both instructionally and operationally, we are committed to enhancing our student learning experiences, always looking to develop and revise curricula appropriately, and supporting our teachers' continued development, but we continue to have an operational focus, and in doing so, we are understanding the need to always evolve our work in goal-setting, and establish a process by which leads the clarity, and to ensure that there's good reporting and dialogue around that. So we made some adjustments going into this school year, and when I say this school year, seventeen eighteen, or eighteen nineteen, we're further going to make revisions to have some clarity around focus on district goals, and to possibly look at a new way of addressing some building level initiatives, rather than having these very, very deep dives into building level objectives, but maybe stepping back and highlighting some individual initiatives throughout the course of the year in our work sessions. So when we think of the district's overarching goals on the curriculum and instruction front, these are things that we remain committed to, and they have been standing goals for the past couple of years, and we continue to look to make sure we're focusing on them, but we will have some continued work and new initiatives that will link to each of them. So you can see that the standing goals that we've had in the area of curriculum and instruction, the first relates to student thinking and understanding, the idea of also developing a balanced assessment system, and then increasing the use of data to inform instruction and planning in our schools. So when we think a little bit about what our work in the instructional focus will begin to look at, and understanding that, you know, this is an evolution from work from the seventeen eighteen school year, this is what Dr. Core and I'll be working with, with our administrative team throughout summer months, to be able to further define goals. for the eighteen nineteen school year. So in doing so, you see that continued growth and focus around the overarching goals that I referenced a moment ago. But then looking at our strategic objectives and areas linked specifically to the strategic plan and areas that we are committed to enhancing. So when we step back, we, we want to have and are going to have conversation where we're looking at long-range planning and identifying staffing needs. So looking at where we are as far as program, looking at where we are with the staffing that we have available to us in the Irvington School and to think about what's next, to think about long range, where we would like to go and how many staff members it may take to be able to get to that point. So not only does that help to inform thinking about our programs and just simply staffing, but it links to, to finance, right? And understanding what we think our needs are on the instructional front or the student programming front. But then where do we land with those objectives on a financial standpoint? And how do we be able to afford that, even assuming we have board support? Is that something that can be done over the scope of three years, is it five years, is it ten years? And as I've heard some trustees and Mr. Hannah specifically say, you know, is there a point when we hit that idea of full employment, so to speak? And do we have everything that's available to us? So that's one area that we're going to dig into. As you know, we're committed to global learning experiences in our schools. And that takes on a lot of different forms. So we can think of the traditional sense of world language instruction or where we can think about the integration of global learning experiences into our curriculum. So we're committed to this on both fronts. As we've discussed in board meetings over the course of the year, we're, we are exploring the concept of elementary world language instruction. So that will be a part of the dialogue that we'll have during the course of this school year. And I think it directly links to the bullet point above and looking at, you know, well, what, is there, is there a model that we, the administration would like to propose for elementary world language? And so what does that look like? If it, not only in concept, but from a staffing perspective and then, of course, a related timeline. Another area for us is going to be a focus on technology, again, as discussed in meetings during the course of the seventeen eighteen school year. This fall, we will be renewing our technology plan. So there'll be work that will be growing out of that, which will engage a number of aspects of stakeholders, from staff to administration and to community members as well, engaged in that process of looking at where we are from technology and renewing goals for our future. We know that we have social studies and science curricula that needs to be revised or aligned to connect with the newly introduced standards, which will take on a good amount of work and time from Dr. Core, our building level leaders, and of course, our teachers that deliver those particular content area. We've been talking about in this budget, this year's budget provides for expansion of Project Lead the Way. So there will be, of course, focus on, on that front and building out program and supporting the needs to ensure a successful launch of our primary age program, but also the new program courses that would be offered at the, the middle school level. And then we've had ongoing discussion related to continued assessment work, alignment of assessments, but then importantly, that use of data, the collection and analysis of data to help inform decision-making in the district to help understand student needs and program effectiveness. Going back to our last Board of Education meeting, Dr. Core led a presentation related to a program assessment model that we're eager, eager to launch this year. So that will fit into this formula. But then that idea of building out the role of a data support position that's going to be able to supplement those efforts along the way to work with leadership to be able to help analyze and collect the data that's available to us in the school district. And then finally, the last two items, and I say that these aren't necessarily listed in any kind of priority order, but we know that we want to continue to focus on our professional learning experiences this year. We're very pleased to be introducing our new early release model, PLRDs, which is a mouthful we're starting to get used to.
Do you think that'll catch on across other districts, the use of that term?
We will see. We're stumbling over it ourselves right now and we're joking, how did we ever come up with this? But the idea of PLRDs, where October through May, we're gonna have two one-hour early release days in each of our schools. And we, actually, Dr. Core led a discussion with our administrators just last week, beginning to start to align and plan our focus for those days for the coming school year. And then the school quality survey, again, something very new, just presented to us on the fourteenth, the first time the district has engaged in such a, a survey. So we're gonna step back and look at takeaways and establish some objectives using that data to help us understand some of the perceptions in our community and see what we can do to, to maximize that data to have an impact on the school district. So as I referenced on the operational side, we do have annually our business and operational goals that will focus on needs with facilities and finances. You know, we're going, and Carol is constantly committed to find opportunities to enhance our finances. And she is in the process of developing long, some long-range financial plans. But a big piece of that is looking at contract negotiations. And we are very pleased to have settled the contract with the Irvington Faculty Association this spring, which is a piece of this puzzle. But we also have open contracts with our custodians and our administrators association. So we are optimistic that as we get into this fall, we'll be able to settle both of those contracts. And not only is that positive from a piece of morale and, and supporting our employees to make sure that they're, they're fairly compensated, but having that information will equip Carol to be able to adequately plan long range and to be able to make some budgetary projections to help inform the governance team's work over the coming years. So when we step back and we think of that, those are some really big projects and lots of time, lots of analytical work. But we know that we have a capital bond project that's before us over the course of this year. And we have lots and lots of work to do between now and the end of this year, if you look at that last bullet, and anticipating a referendum before the close of the calendar year. So when we think of some of those highlights, there's gonna be continued partnership and engagement with our community members and some additional public forums. But importantly, the board leading up to that is gonna have to work with the administration to develop the project scope. Currently, as Carol shared, also at the last board meeting, you know, we're in process of getting some estimates from our construction manager, as well as our architect, who's doing some sketches for us. So there'll be some work that'll be done over the summer, but when we hit the ground in September, we're gonna be engaging the board and talking about realistically where we think we stand with what we can afford and begin to prioritize these needs. So there's gonna be some significant work for us to tackle during that period of time. When we think of communications, it's always an ongoing initiative for us. You know, this spring into summer, we are pleased to be able to successfully launch our, our new website. We know that there's continued development of that that's going to occur over the summer with a whole series of action steps that we've already planned. But we know that this is gonna be something that's going to grow with us, so we look forward to that expansion. Based upon experience, as well as some of the information that's come back from the survey, I'm personally going to be looking into some opportunities to tackle the next two items that are listed on the slide, that are gonna be looking to some new approaches to communication that'll have different types of touchpoints with different segments of our school community. And that idea of seeking opportunities to bolster their school identity, pride, spirit and the like. So that will be areas that I'm eager to take on some real challenges and look to tackle. I think that there's gonna be lots of opportunity on both of those fronts to, to engage students, staff, community members that will serve the district quite well. But in doing so, we always have to reflect on where we stand in the available time for the, for meetings. Now, going back to the resolution just a few moments ago and approving the dates, there'll have to be some adjustment here because quite literally, the adjustments we made as approved by resolution were made this morning. But we'll have to make some modifications here. But this is just the general framework for our meeting structure for this year. So if we look to the right side of the screen, we're looking at what our work sessions are and that idea of when we're going to fit in some of the reference discussion items that were talked about before. But importantly, we know that some of this time is also gonna be consumed with discussions and presentations related to the capital project. There's also need, possibly related to that, to add a few additional meetings throughout the, the course of the year. The one shift that, that we're also possibly looking to make is we have a variety of opportunities to recognize students throughout the course of the school year. And considering the fact that our regular meetings are generally shorter meetings, that we were looking to shift student recognition to those meetings to allow for some balance and more focus on the work sessions, so we're not in a spot where we're pushing into the wee hours on those dates. So you can see some topics that are referenced there, the first being Math twenty-four, which is kind of a holding place because we know Ms. Chapman wants to recognize students on that date. But as we head into the school year, we actually survey our administrators and seek opportunities to identify students for a variety of different achievements. So there will be a, a number of different topics that will be added throughout the, the course of the year as we finalize the meeting calendar. But that said, I think, you know, on the administrative side, we have lots of work to do related to planning over the summer months and we look forward to what we achieve with the administrators to start to bring some of this to life in, in August. We also acknowledge that we're gonna be working with board leadership to fine tune some of the presentation process to, to, to really make sure that we're making good use of our time and conveying that information that is not only important for the board to learn about, but to appropriately gauge our, our community on some of the important initiatives that are present in the district.
Great, thank you. Do I start maybe in the, if there's any questions, I guess I'll go by level of enthusiasm if somebody has a question?
Well, I, I have a question only because now that I've been on the board long enough, I realize how hard it is to work in so many topics that need to be covered. How do you foresee, when we look at this calendar, fitting in conversations about the bond and where we're at and working with Carol? I mean, to me, it's, it, there's so much work to be done, just to follow up on last year. Do, do you envision extra meetings when it comes to bond conversations? Or do, when I see work session, are, are we really to assume three to four of those meetings have to be related to bond?
My guess is it's gonna be a little bit of both. I, I think that we will use, utilize some of this time. But going back to the past experience of the bond in two thousand fourteen, which that you were deeply involved in before your role on the board, that we did add two or three additional meetings specific to that topic. So I, I would suspect as we go through our planning, we would propose some additional meetings. Right now, as I said before and as Carol discussed at the last board meeting, there's, we're in the process of collecting a lot of information from our, our professional partners. And I think some of that will inform how much work needs to be done. You know, when we're looking at what that threshold is for a bond and we've regularly talked about cost neutrality. When we look at the scope of the work and the priorities that have surfaced from the Capital Projects Planning Committee, the recommendations and thoughts that have come from the Board of Education, I would suspect that we're gonna have a lot of heavy lifting to do to, to see how we arrive at what our priorities are and what ultimately that financial threshold for the bond is. So my guess right now is that we are gonna likely have to have a couple of meetings just around prioritization associated with costs, because I think there's gonna be a lot of things that seem like on the face, they are top priority to us. But at the end of the day, it's what can we afford? And the real challenge is gonna be that we know that we are, one of our top priorities is gonna be safety and security. And that is going to be an expensive component of what is proposed. But we also have infrastructure that we need to address that we can't ignore. So looking at potholes, the rooftops and boilers, things that we just can't let slide. And then we have those items that are, you know, the wish list sort of things that are linked to strategic plan and modernizing student learning spaces and, and the like. So it's, how are we gonna fit it into the monies available? So with that challenge, yeah, there's gonna be a need to add probably a couple of additional meetings in there. And Carol and I have already started a conversation about some of this.
Yeah, the, the prioritization can be a little bit later until we get closer to that bond, you know, when we make the resolution to put the bond up. The one that we're gonna have to do pretty quickly is the seeker one. So that one's gonna have to be sometime in September, if not, you know, as early as possible. So as soon as we have an idea of what we're gonna be doing, we're gonna put that one up. Then the rest can kind of happen and then we'll get it going. So we really need to get advice now from our strategic partners. That's a, you, you have to do a, a resolute, you'll have to do a resolution to start the seeker process, which is the environmental review.
Start the process.
Right, because you are the lead agency in that review. So then we have experts do the review, but then you have to accept that review. So it's like you, you are the lead agency. So that resolution basically establishes you as the lead agency and gives you that ownership of reviewing that report and accepting it. So that, that's gonna be a key step because that's a timeline issue.
Which requires a public meeting and public comment.
That's a public resolution. So that, that I'm gonna hope, depending on when we can get that in. But the architects will be letting us know what we'll need that, if we need that and where we, you know, where we will need that. So that's one of my key pieces right now. Then the prioritization, then we figure out what's gonna be on the, the voting resolution. Because that's not part of the voting resolution.
Right, right. I mean, my only response to that, Chris and I, I agree and I think it's a good approach, is that I would hope we don't sacrifice too many of our work sessions for the bond discussion because I feel like we've, we've really worked very hard together in the last two years to, to tackle certain topics and to push forward some of our goals. And to lose those work sessions, at least a majority of them, to a conversation with the bond discussion while it's clearly worthwhile, I feel like we will not be kind of keeping the momentum. And there's a big balance here, I would hope. I also think there's something to be said, having been involved in a bond in the past, that the, the conversations that revolve around the bond are actually not on a Tuesday night. Like we, we really make an effort and I certainly don't want to look to bring the administrators here or us on a different night of the week. But I would also put that out there, that maybe two or three of them are not a Tuesday because otherwise we end up tacking it onto a work session and we're here way too late, we're too tired and we really don't give it the time it deserves.
No, they're all fair points and as I said, Carol and I, I think in this conversation last Thursday, or well, it's Wednesday.
Well, we've had it all along.
But, but there's definitely a need to make sure there's balance there. And there's a lot to, to accomplish, to your point that, you know, I think each and every year, the conversations that we've had in work sessions have become richer, become more focused. We need to become more targeted and efficient, but we don't want to lose that time. I totally agree. So there's gonna be, there's some balance there.
No, I mean, it's really on the scale of, of a second budget process, but in the, the fall in terms of the lift.
May I ask for a bit more detail on the, so the, since I wasn't around for the formulation of the prior technology plan, how that works as far as public meeting discussion here, for example, versus with the board that's comprised of the various members of the community and so on?
Yeah, so there's, and I'm trying to remember all my acronyms now.
Please don't use them.
So there's, within our technology plan, there's a number of different structures. So we have building level technology meeting committees and then there's a district level committee that will be engaged, where Jesse will put out a call for some volunteers. There'll be opportunities for board members to, to join the process. And we actually will have a couple of work sessions with that committee. We'll really be reviewing our existing plan, identifying adjustments. So there's gonna be, have to be reports on progress, right, associated with that because you think of so much has changed in, in the last three years since the last plan from, you know, wifi being added to the elementary schools, wifi having been expanded at, at the secondary schools until Friday. at the secondary schools until Friday, the thirteenth, we're actually expanding our bandwidth across the district. Think about the growth of PLTW, additional technology classes, and so on. There's lots of updating that has to be done. But then now that we've had that level of progress over the past three years, what are the new objectives begin to look like? So it's, like we said, it's a cross-sectional group of teachers, administrators, we engage the parents in the process. So that'll be scheduled to occur this fall, and the board will be, of course, updated accordingly, and that may lead to one of our workshop topics for us this fall as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would, I would suggest that, I have additional questions, but I know that we'll be able to address some of them at later points. So if there are no further questions on this, we'll look forward. Because of our limited time, we had discussed, Chris and I, tabling the charitable contribution fund and the capital projects, any update related to that to a future meeting? And we're looking at the seventeenth of July, to hold a meeting to address those. So, but because we wanted to hold this policy discussion because it takes two readings before we can have a vote to move forward on it, we will have this discussion about board structure, which, I don't know if you want to share the policy piece?
So their question had been raised by members of the seventeen eighteen board about the value of possibly adding a second vice president. So you'd have a first vice president and a second vice president. And in doing so, there would be that opportunity to share some responsibility of the leadership role of the Board of Education, providing space for more dialogue with the leadership team of the board and the district leadership. So in doing so, there's a need to consider the review and Mr. Montana is our attorney who just happened to walk in, welcome, that a couple tweaks to policies that would reflect the adjustments there, and they are attached in board docs. And essentially, aside from resolution that would take place in the reorganization meeting, there's a few tweaks to policies that you would, again, that are listed here that would just reflect the new or proposed organization. So in doing so, the one that's most prominent is Policy 20210, which is the annual organization of the board. And looking there, simply adding the language from having the board elected president and vice president to having the board elect a president, vice president, and second vice president. And that's some specific language that provides us with a space to have the conversation today, reviewing consideration of policy, and then adoption of policy, and then essentially a future reorganization once policy was adopted to not only then have an election of a second vice president, but then to address the shift in the line of authority that would be present in relationship to that. But three very, very modest adjustments should the board choose to go this route.
And I guess just to give it some more context, the experience for Maria and myself this year is that, as I was indicating earlier, there's a significant amount of time spent in coordinating and planning. And at different points in the year, you know, whether someone had a trip or illness or work-related responsibilities, it gets really difficult to sustain the work moving forward. So one aspect of it is, we're in putting forward this idea is that with having an additional VP, that we have the ability to have additional continuity over the course of the year, ability to hopefully better distribute the balance of communication to the rest of the board. And, you know, also, the important aspect of the work we do is working with the superintendent. And so that's also an important opportunity that, you know, if there's challenges to availability, that we have an additional person who's been in the loop on the planning conversations to sustain those conversations were some of the key ideas behind putting this idea forward.
Well, from my perspective, I mean, I can completely understand the opportunity to add a second VP and why you would want to do that. A couple concerns I have is that when you add a second VP, you then get three people rather than two who frankly are a little more involved than the rest of the board, a little bit more interacting with the superintendent, the other administrators. You've got others now who are not. And when you get three and then four who are not, there's a little bit of a concern that I had just initially, that is that good governance for us as a Board of Ed? Because inevitably, if there's three involved, sometimes there's one that gets pulled into the loop. So then you've got four that are more closely aligned and more involved in conversations that maybe the other three are not involved in. I think if we go down this road, which I'm not objecting to it, you know, outright, I think there has to be a greater responsibility for reporting back to the rest of the board. And I know we do that, you know, as we can, but I think it would have to be more formalized that if you went into the superintendent as a three-person, you know, kind of governance exec team, then you would always have to find, you know, a responsibility to report back to the rest of us. Because otherwise, I'm afraid we're going to think we know what's going on and we think we talked to one of you, but maybe we didn't. Because the more people that are in that room, there's three of you now, you know, who's talking to who and is one aligned with one board member who's not in the room or you collectively? It sounds silly, but I mean, I've been on enough of these organizations to know that, you know, in the volunteer world, that it's tricky stuff because, you know, you walk out of that meeting and you've all got to go to your jobs, and then who's going to be reporting and how are you going to report to the rest of us? So I think as long as we really, as a Board of Ed, step back and say, okay, this makes sense for those who've stepped up in this kind of higher leadership role, but then what is the responsibility and obligation for you guys to come back and make sure at the same time we're all on board? Because we all know how it works. It kind of gets trickled down, and sometimes one finds out on a Monday and another one finds out on a Tuesday. That's life. But I just, I just get a little worried when you put another person in the room. So that's my initial gut. My other reaction, again, having done a lot of this in the past, is that I would prefer it be voted on year to year because I could see why one year you definitely, that, you know, that we need an extra person because, you know, somebody has taken on a new job or somebody has a family, you know, responsibility and they really can't give it the time they thought, so two VPs would really be helpful. But other years, it may not be so good that the vice president and president are really aligned and they're working like a machine and they have, you know, neither of them are working. This is their, you know, this is what they're putting their time to. So I don't know if you can structure it where it's really up to the board every year to decide whether you want two VPs or are we just changing it forever and that's just the way we're operating?
Yeah, well, nothing is forever, so.
True, and this, yes.
But, I mean, what I would say, just based on the experience, and we have the opportunity with a board self-reflection retreat tonight to discuss it further, but, you know, there's some takeaways. We attempted to do our best to communicate to the board with, you know, emails out from our planning meetings and the opportunity to, either we would reach out or, with the number of people on the board, it's sometimes easier to ask you to call us when you're available. But, I mean, your concern is also a part of the solution, which is hopefully it makes it easier to communicate out on a consistent basis to the board. So I see that as an opportunity. I'd also suggest that as there's a cycle of people moving through these roles, you know, maybe Maria is not on the, or myself are on the exec team next year. So we're people who've had the experience, but now there's a whole other group of people involved. So we, we understand the mechanics of what the exec team is doing, but we're not on the exec team. We're sort of, you know, have that understanding without being engaged. So I would say that pretty quickly you have a whole group of board members who have some relationship to it, so that in some ways it counteracts what you're suggesting as well because, that risk, because you would, you know, pretty quickly there'll be another group of people involved in that leadership team, so.
Do we know of other boards in the area?
We didn't poll other, other boards that are.
Because I know we were one of the few that were five and we moved to seven.
Seven, yeah.
Which now I feel like we're finally, you know, kind of getting our stride with seven. But I, I'm not aware of other Rivertown school districts who have a seven-person Board of Ed who have a second VP. So I'm just curious if that's the case, why or why.
And the other piece I wanted to say, which you reminded me of, is that this year with the expansion to seven, a lot of work has been about putting in new systems to reflect that. And hopefully, year two of having a seven-member board is solidifying those systems. So one personal goal is I'd like to think that we'll become, just like we're talking about with meetings, that our planning becomes more efficient as well and that the toll in terms of time on members of the exec team will become more bearable in terms of week to week, more doable is maybe a better way to say it. So I think that could be a goal, and so that's why, you know, and certainly that nothing is forever, maybe we'll find ourselves in a place where, you know, we've got this to a good place where it's pretty efficient and two would work well. Seeing no other comment or question, we will, I guess we need a thirty day before we can do a second reading, so we will follow up if there's, I guess one takeaway though is that you had given us some feedback about the idea of the alternating from two to one in any given year in terms of the systems.
Yeah, so my thought was, you know, that idea that, that, you know, we're looking at adjustments and as, and your conversation reflected, I think that, you know, with that shift to the seven-member board, we're looking at, you know, the shifts that have occurred. And you're looking to make the leadership and the partnership more effective and more efficient, whether it's with communication, the delineation of responsibility and so on. So I can see the value to that. Just as we're considering the addition of the second vice president now, the board down the road can always evaluate it and say, hey, it's not necessary, it's not working, and can undo it. I was uncomfortable with the idea of having it open-ended and that you make an adjustment from year to year. In my mind, that kind of undermines the governance structure a little bit. And if we're focused on building successful systems and structures to help lead the district, I don't want to be in a spot where we're kind of hemming and hawing and going back and forth from year to year. So if the board makes the choice to move forward and add the second position, I would say that we leave it as such in policy, but then if it is not working, we can always reevaluate and remove it and go back to the, you know, the traditional leadership role that we've had in place with the president and vice president. I just don't want it to be out there as another, one responsibility to evaluate this each year, see, do we want to do it, do we not want to do it? If the board moves forward, I'd say we should be committed to having the structure and making the structure work. And then if we find it to not be necessary or effective, then we step back and have a transparent conversation about it and look to undo it if the board chooses to do so. I just was uncomfortable with the idea of having in policy to make an annual decision whether you're going to have one or two VPs.
That makes sense. I guess the only thing I would ask then is if we could just maybe ask around a little, has anybody else?
Yeah, so maybe before we come back again, let's, we'll take a look.
Before we come back again, just throw it out there.
Sure.
I just want to add that I congratulate our governance team for being open to creative solutions and understanding the reality of volunteer work on boards. And absolutely second Deb's concerns about ensuring that communication, a line of communication be established in a way that the whole board feels like they can support it as a successful experimental year if it turns out to go that way.
Okay. So we'll reflect on that and then do the bit of surveying and come back to talk about it at a future meeting. So with that, I would like to have a motion to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing particular persons. And I think that's all we'll have time for, honestly, but the other.
Just give me one second.
In terms of discussing the other aspect, what would that be? And legal advice. So I guess, can I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
So Deb Hargraves was the first and Brian Friedman was the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Bye.
Aye.